Counsel will come to order. Please all rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, our servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Just for those watching, both here and in the audience, we do have some councils that are just wrapping up some business in the other room. They will be in momentarily, so it's not as bleak and meagre as it seems. Counselor, excuse me. Clerk will next start our business. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Condon.
Crowe.
Here.
Linehan.
McDonald.
Here.
Murphy.
O'Malley.
Sika.
Simonelli.
Winslow.
Spatafora.
Spatafora here.
We've got a call on Quorum Bailey.
We've just got enough for Quorum. Next order of business.
The guest citizen's achievement and announcement, the council to recognize Shane Smith, owner of Hugh O'Neill's Restaurant and Pub, for his 20th year in business.
Shane here?
No.
Is anybody here representing Shane? Does Shane have a proxy?
No.
O'Malley's not here either, though. I don't see Counsel O'Malley.
I think he'd like Counsel O'Malley to know.
Okay. So I've been told by Maria Louise, for those who cannot hear, that Shane was, unfortunately, Shane Smith, the owner of Hugh O'Neill's, is not able to attend tonight to accept his award, so I'm assuming he'll do it at a later date. Next order of business. Is there a public comment?
Yes, I have one. Let me see if anything's on there. I don't think anything's.
You want me to check?
No, no, Craig, hold on.
Sure.
I have one from Frank Senna. Dear City Clerk Lucy, my name is Frank Senna of 120 Mountain Ave, Apartment 2, Malden, 02148, and proud member of the City of Malden Disability Commission, and I'm writing you to say that I'm in favor of Paper 170-22 and hope that the City Council unanimously agrees and votes to pass this paper.
Thank you. We're just going to check to make sure that none of the participants signed the form at the podium, so just give us one second. Anybody there? Okay. I need to use it again. Okay. Next order of business.
Paper 155-22, minutes of the meeting, March 29, 2022, and Paper 156-22, minutes of the meeting, of April 5, 2022.
Okay, on Counselor Winslow's motion to approve the minutes, all in favor? All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next order of business.
Not too fast for you, am I right, Craig? You started quick. Paper 157-22, mayoral appointment. Armin Kadervian of 11 Nealon Street, Malden, as an associate member of the Board of Appeal. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and to expire on March 1, 2025. Armin will fill the vacancy left by David Santellica.
On Counsel Simonelli's motion to refer to appointments personnel committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The appointment is referred to appointments personnel committee. Next order of business.
Paper 158-22, mayoral appointment, reappointment. Allison Pardak of 15 Wind Terrace, Malden, as an associate member of the Commission on Energy Efficiency and Sustainability. Said term to expire on April 11, 2024. Counsel confirmation is not required.
Yeah, on Counsel Simonelli's motion to place the appointment on file, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item is placed on file. Next order of business.
Counselor Sika, the Chair of License, wants me to read all these licenses. Paper 159-22, petition, open air lot, 3C Realty Trust, 54 Winter Street, 22 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 160-22, petition, open air lot, Andy Service Center, Inc., 356 Lebanon Street, 12 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 161-22, petition, open air lot, Northeast Transport and Snow Services, Inc., 531 Maria Broadway, 5 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 162-22, petition, open air parking lot, AMG Auto Sales, Inc., 1358 Eastern Ave, 24 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 163-22, petition, secondhand dealer, Golden Diamonds, etc., Inc., 29 Pleasant Street, it's a renewal. Paper 164-22, petition, pawnbroker, Golden Diamonds, etc., Inc., 29 Pleasant Street, it's a renewal. Paper 165-22, petition, class 2 dealer, Georgie L. Espenzol, DBA Gar, Gar Auto Sales, 147 Highland Ave, 15 spaces, it's new. Petition, livery. Mohayad Mogai, 152 Hancock Street, new. Paper 167-22, petition, Lodging House License, Top Tier Properties LLC, DBA Circo, Carlton Realty Trust, 33 Maple Street, 44 rooms, it's a renewal. And Paper 168-22, billiard license, Malden Post, 16 Italian-American War Vets, 40 Oakland Street, Malden, 1 table, it's a renewal.
Okay, one second, please.
Counselor Sika, can you say that in the microphone? Just give me one second here to turn that on. Is it on, counsel?
Nope.
Oh, is it not lighting up again? Oh, let me try this. Is it lighting up now, counsel?
Nope.
Hit the button, see if it works.
I hit the button.
All right, we're going to need a little technical assistance, so I'm the only one again who can speak, the same issue as last time. On Counselor Sika's motion to refer the petitioners to license, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items are referred to licensing. Just bear with me, everybody, counselors, audience members. We'll see if we can get somebody to come down here and reset the system again. The reason why I wanted Counselor Sika to speak into the mic, I think last year, the last meeting I mentioned it to, some of the residents at home have complained about not being able to hear us or hear the votes, so I'd like to do is when somebody wants to do it, just so we can recognize that, I'll turn on everybody's mic, so just bear with me when I can do it. Right now, I am not able to turn on any mics. It was the same issue we had last time. I think Maria Louise is making a phone call right now, so bear with me. Next order of business.
Paper 169-22, order that the mayor be authorized to file an application for grants under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the Cranston Gonzales Housing Act of 1990, CDBG budget.
On Counselor Condon's motion to refer the paper to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The item is referred to finance. Next order of business.
Paper 170-22, order that the city may be authorized to file an application for grants under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the Cranston Gonzales Housing Act of 1990, as amended to be administered by the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development for fiscal year 2023, including all understanding and assurances contained therein or substantially in the form presented to this meeting, and that Gary Christensen, Mayor and Chief Executive Officer of the City of Malden, be hereby is directed and designated as the authorized representative for and in the name and behalf of the City of Malden to sign and file said plan, to act in connection with said plan, and to provide such additional information as may be required.
On Counsel Condon's motion to refer the paper to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item is referred to finance. If everybody wants to speak, I can't turn the mics on, so just, I'll look around and you can, you know, try to work it as much as possible until we get somebody down here to help us, so.
Paper 171-22, order that the City Council notify the Secretary of State that City of Malden will use image cast precinct tabulators and image cast central voting equipment for the state primary to be held on September 6, 2022, and for all subsequent elections.
So on, say it again, I'm sorry. This is just to approve, I can speak this. Okay, thank you. So the clerk would like to speak, this is a motion to approve, but I'm going to entertain the clerk to speak. Your mic can work, and so that's good.
Yeah, so I was just in finance, and we talked a little bit about this. So what the city did this past year is they've made a huge investment in upgrading all the vote equipment. Anytime you change the voter's equipment, which we haven't done for 30 years, the voting equipment is very old and breaking down, so we have to notify to the Secretary of State that those will be the machines that we'll be using in the future. So that's what this paper is for.
Counsel Winslow for the paper.
Yeah, so, just a basic question. Will we basically have the same paper kind of ballots that you fill out with, like, a black name? Is that the same, same basic technology?
It is the same. We won't even know the same, but we know they're mu machines, they're digitalized, they have a language aspect to it, so they're just a big upgrade than what we were using. And as we discussed, the other machines were breaking down, so we need to do something. It's a big investment for the city, it's a big number.
So your office will see a change, but the voters will be very similar.
Same way they've been doing it, they probably won't even notice, but, you know, we know it's a better machine that they're using.
Any other questions?
Got a motion to approve the order?
I believe that's appropriate. Anthony Rodriguez just called me, so he's on his way down here to fix this. So on Counsel Winslow's motion to approve the order, seconded by Counselor Kerry McDonald, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is approved. Next order of business.
Okay, so this had a little bit of a typo on it, so it should read, 183-22, order that the City of Malden and, it says the City Council, it's supposed to be and the Council on Aging, along with the Senior Senate Director, will begin research on becoming an AARP, age-friendly community, which is part of an international effort of the World Health Organization Initiative to promote planning to prepare cities to address the needs of rapidly aging population.
This is going to be referred to the, oh, Counsel Corr, you want to speak?
Yeah, it's going to be referred to the age-friendly.
So on Counsel Crowe's motion to refer to the Age Friendly Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Items referred. We're going to take a two-minute recess, everybody. On Counsel Sika's motion to take a two-minute recess, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel's recess, just so we can have Mr. Rodriguez fix this, and we're not trying to put the cards to monkeys. It's the same issue, it was, I can't. 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 It's the same issue, it was, I can't.
Yeah, so I was just in finance, and we talked a little bit about this. So what the city did this past year is they've made a huge investment in upgrading all the vote equipment. Anytime you change the voter's equipment, which we haven't done for 30 years, the voting equipment is very old and breaking down, so we have to notify to the Secretary of State that those will be the machines that we'll be using in the future. So that's what this paper is for.
Counsel Winslow for the paper.
Yeah, so, just a basic question. Will we basically have the same paper kind of ballots that you fill out with, like, a black name? Is that the same, same basic technology?
It is the same. We won't even know the same, but we know they're mu machines, they're digitalized, they have a language aspect to it, so they're just a big upgrade than what we were using. And as we discussed, the other machines were breaking down, so we need to do something. It's a big investment for the city, it's a big number.
So your office will see a change, but the voters will be very similar.
Same way they've been doing it, they probably won't even notice, but, you know, we know it's a better machine that they're using.
Any other questions?
Got a motion to approve the order?
I believe that's appropriate. Anthony Rodriguez just called me, so he's on his way down here to fix this. So on Counsel Winslow's motion to approve the order, seconded by Counselor Kerry McDonald, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is approved. Next order of business.
Okay, so this had a little bit of a typo on it, so it should read, 183-22, order that the City of Malden and, it says the City Council, it's supposed to be and the Council on Aging, along with the Senior Senate Director, will begin research on becoming an AARP, age-friendly community, which is part of an international effort of the World Health Organization Initiative to promote planning to prepare cities to address the needs of rapidly aging population.
This is going to be referred to the, oh, Counsel Corr, you want to speak?
Yeah, it's going to be referred to the age-friendly.
So on Counsel Crowe's motion to refer to the Age Friendly Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Items referred. We're going to take a two-minute recess, everybody. On Counsel Sika's motion, take a two-minute recess, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel's recess, just so we can have Mr. Rodriguez fix this, and we're not trying to put the cards to monkeys. It's the same issue, it was, I can't.
By looking at some actual plans of schools, we used the Forestdale School as a model because it seemed to have actually a very relatively low ratio of play space to classroom space. So I worked with Building Inspector Miller to come up with that. And the added language was another recommendation that the requirement not apply to permits before January 21st, 2022, which was the notice, the second set of hearing. So it's been very thoroughly reviewed. I think that it's worthwhile to proceed with this so that we have this, you know, right now we just kind of have a blank spot in our intensity uses for this. And the Dover Amendment specifically allows us to set reasonable requirements for open space for educational institutions. So I think that's the recommendations and consistent there. So I would, I am very supportive and it's been a long process. I appreciate the input of the planning and legal staff to make sure we're doing something that advances the interest of the community and but also making sure that we have a fair and legal process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow.
Make a motion to enroll.
Okay. Counselor Crowe's motion to enroll, seconded by Counselor Winslow, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
O'Malley.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli. Winslow.
Yes. Next order of business. Motion passes. I believe it's nine to nothing.
Yep. Paper 174-22 Committee Report Personnel Appointments. Paper 123-22 Order That Abraham Nidwain and Theodore Joanne Shaheen be recommended favorable to the City Council for appointment as the two council appointments as resident members of the Racial Equity Commission.
On Counselor Semenelli's motion received, the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Semenelli for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold on, Mr. Semenelli, I'm sorry. Counselor Semenelli, your mic is on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, as you know, we had some interviews the last couple of weeks for the Racial Equity Commission.
Is your mic off? Hold on, don't touch the button, hold on.
Didn't touch it in the first place. Did I touch the button? Getting bleed and touch it. So anyway, where I left off. So anyway, we had some real spirited and passionate folks that came before us for these interviews. The committee did recommend, all favorably three to one, both Nidwain, Abraham, Nidwain, and Theodore, Joanne, Shaheen for both these positions. It was tough. There was a couple of good candidates there, but the committee asked some great questions and got some good feedback, and I think they'll be a pleasure to be serving with up here on this committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Semenelli. Any questions or Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, thank you. I am very excited to see these appointments move forward and for the Racial Equity Commission to start its work. And I will be supporting these appointments tonight. I did just want to say, you know, to Counselor Semenelli's part, it was a harder process than I think it needed to be, and I just think we got some signals crossed with the mayor's office about how applications were going to come in and get considered. So I do want to just apologize to anybody who tried to apply and that that felt confusing about how, you know, which door to go through to get to consideration. In the end, you know, we did have a more limited pool, but we're able to put some candidates forward to ensure the commission can move forward. I do recognize that part of the challenge in a community like Malden is the different ties to existing groups and parts of the community that we have. So I recognize, you know, some of the folks based on their employment or relationships may have to recuse themselves to avoid conflicts of interest as part of the work. But that's a common dynamic in many of our committees, and I have full confidence they can address that appropriately. So I do hope that in the future we'll just find a way to be a little clearer with the mayor's office about when there's joint appointments to be made at the same time, how that proceeds in a way that is easiest for our residents to get full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Let me just see if there's anybody, hold on, I can't see Counselor Condon, doesn't have your last name there. Counselor Condon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we had a lot of our questions answered. I'm happy to support both these people because I think they'll be very productive as a member of this committee. So I'm ready to support both people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Counselor, no other lights? On Counselor Semenelli's motion to adopt the order?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Condon, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Item is passed, nine to nothing. Got to keep on doing my math here. Next order of business.
Well, congratulations, folks, to those folks.
This is why you got to keep your mic off, Counselor. This is why you got to keep it, you just jump right in there.
So Counselor Sika, the Chair of License, asked me that I read all these petitions at once.
Okay. On Counsel, so on Counselor Sika's, wait, you're going to read them first, right?
Yeah. So it's paper number 175-22 Committee Report. License Committee, the Standing Committee on Licensees to Whom Refer the Below Papers, having considered the same, make the following report. The committee recommends these licenses be granted. Paper 128-22 Petition Extended Hours Speedway Number 2504, 214 Broadway, 24/7, it's a renewal. Paper 129-22 Petition Livery License Stephanie Lacona, 205 Bryant Street, one livery, it's a renewal. Paper 130-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker AM Design Jewelry, 664 Salem Street, secondhand dealer, it's a renewal. Paper 131-22 Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker Game Staff Number 6263, 44 Broadway Suite A110, secondhand dealer license, it's a renewal. Paper 132-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker Art Carl Jewellers and AC Loan, 56 Pleasant Street, pawnbroker license and secondhand dealer, two licenses, it's a renewal. Paper 133-22 Petition Amusement Machines La Tienda, 145 Lebanon Street, three machines, it's new. Paper 134-22 Petition Billiard License Ellen K. Billiard Pool Hall, 94 B Pleasant Street, seven tables, it's a renewal. Paper 135-22 Petition Billiard License Loyal Order of the Moose, Lodge 1910, 562 Broadway, it's two tables, it's a renewal. Paper 136-22 Petition Billiard License Club 24 Inc., 787 Salem Street, two tables, it's a renewal. Paper 137-22 Open Air Parking Lot, Malden Middlesex Motor Sales, DBA Spatafora Auto, 35 Canal Street, 10 spaces, it's a renewal. And paper 57-22 Petition Secondhand Dealer or Pawn Broker La Tienda, 45 Lebanon Street, it's secondhand dealer, it's new.
On Counselor Sika's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Sika for the committee report.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafora. So the License Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we spoke to the compliance guys. None of these petitions have had any issues. There are a couple of new ones, and I think it's just La Tienda in Maplewood Square for their amusement and their secondhand dealer that we met with last week. So on that, I will make a motion to approve all these petitions.
Okay, on Counselor Sika's motion to grant, seconded by Counselor Winslow. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is nine, nothing, just for the audience so they know. Next order of business.
Paper 17?
Oh, sorry, I think you shut it off.
No, that's my fault.
You shut it off.
I shut it off. Paper 176-22 Committee Report. License Committee. Paper 58-22 and 59-22, the Standing Committee on License to whom referred the above papers, having considered the same, makes the following report. The committee recommends the license for paper 58-22 be granted. The committee voted unanimously. The petition 59, we recommend favorable. Counselor Sika wishes to do the first paper first, 58-22. It's a petition livery, David Gustav Ulis, 230 Bryant Street Apartment 3, it's one vehicle, it's a renewal.
Counselor Sika's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Sika for the committee. One second, Counsel, I don't think you can turn it on for some reason. There you go.
Thank you, Counselor. Once again, the License Committee met on this petition. There were no issues through the compliance guys, so I make a motion to grant this petition.
Okay, any lights? Counselor Winslow?
Second.
Oh, on Counselor Winslow's motion, excuse me, on Counselor Sika's motion to grant, seconded by Counselor Winslow, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is granted, nine, nothing. Next order of business.
Second.
You shut it off.
The second paper on that petition, it's petition outdoor parking, open air parking lot, Revere Auto Sales Inc., 77 Eastern Ave., more than 30 spaces, it's new.
Counselor Sika's motion to receive the committee report?
Aye.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Sika for the committee.
Thank you again, Counselor. So the License Committee met once again discussing this issue. I had the pleasure of meeting our compliance guy, Dave Moss, out at the location, 77 Eastern Ave. We discussed it in committee a couple of weeks ago. They're looking for an outdoor parking permit of 30 spaces, but it's not a parking lot. It's a hill with trees and brush and grass, and we are not in the business of granting open parking permits to a parking lot that doesn't exist. So the License Committee made a motion to deny this petition. So I make a motion to deny this petition.
Okay, we got a couple of seconds here, hold on. So I heard Counselor Semenelli first. So on Counselor Sika's motion to deny the petition, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, all those, let's do a roll call.
Okay.
This is going to be easier. So on, roll call.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
So yes is, excuse me, sorry, Counselor. So a yes is to deny.
Yep.
Yes, yep. And then no is to grant. So yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Not right now, sir.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Permit, the petition, the permit is denied, nine, nothing. Next order of business.
There's five committee reports financed. Can I read the committee reports first, and then you can accept the committee reports, then we can go to the papers?
I will look over to the acting finance chair, Counsel Condon. Do you have a preference?
Way, any way you want to do it.
A lot of love in the room tonight, ladies. Clerk, whatever you want to do. Unless there's a preference from the committee?
Take them one at a time.
You want to take them, what? All right, take them one at a time.
Okay. Paper 177-22 Committee Report. Finance Paper 139-22 Order That $250,000 is appropriated from available general funds, cash, to fund human resource professional services.
On Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Condon for the committee.
Thank you.
Hold on, Counsel, let me just turn on your mic, one second. I was crossing out all the Murphys and making sure I called you. Hold on.
Thank you, Mr. President.
What, wait, wait?
One more time.
Yeah, you can't.
Thank you.
You saying that doesn't make the mic work. Counsel Condon.
Okay, this is a request for $250,000. We met last week on this, and that's money from the general fund, free cash, to be transferred over to our human resources professional services. And that's for legal services for the pending police litigation. So I request that we adopt this.
Okay. Any questions for Counselor Condon? Okay.
No, thank you.
None? Okay. On Counselor Condon's motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, he raised his hand. Clerk will call the rolls, a financial paper.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora, yes. Motion, it is granted, passes, it's nine, nothing. Next order of business.
Paper 178-22 Committee Report. Finance Paper 140-22 Order That $1 million is appropriated to pay costs of the Dever Park revitalization project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 71, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city thereof, therefore.
Counselor, Counsel Condon for the paper.
Move that we.
Didn't we already do that for all of them?
Committee report.
Right? Because we got all the numbers already, right? All you want to do is separate. On Counselor Condon's motion received, the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Condon for the committee report. I apologize. Counsel Condon, you have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week on this. This gets us one step closer to moving forward with the Dever Park revitalization project. It's $1 million, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor and the mayor's office and our financial team for their support to move us a step closer. So I'd like to adopt this, that we go out to bond for that $1 million.
Okay, questions for the Counselor? Counselor McDonald, give me one second so everybody can hear you. Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. Very excited about this project, want to see it move forward. Just curious, how much more is there to fund in this project? Do you have a sense of that?
$1 million that we hope will come from ARPA funds.
Okay, so beyond all the, another million, okay.
And that should get us up to the three, right now we're at 2.65 million. Another million dollars, hopefully from the ARPA funds will get us up to 3.56.
You got the PAC grant too.
Thank you.
And you got a PAC grant too, right?
Oh, we have, we have funding from PAC grant, we have CDBG, we have CPA funding, we have funding, right now this gets us to 2.65 million, with $1 million to go, which should get its total revitalization of that park, 8.1 acres.
Okay. Counselor Hayes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, last week we did discuss it, it's an excellent project. I've been for this since it started and went to a couple of meetings, so I just want to say thank you to everyone involved and also to let, I did ask and wanted to be clear that this is all a grass field. Everything is grass at Dever Park, so I just wanted to let every, you know, the public know that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes? Any other lights? Any other lights? Okay.
Move to adopt.
Counselor, you want to run the meeting, Counselor?
No.
I was just checking.
Move to adopt.
Okay, on Counselor Condon's motion to adopt, the clerk will call, seconded by Counselor Crowe, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Nine, nothing. Congratulations, Counselor, and the residents of Warr 2, and I know you had a good team there too, so. Janelle Devitz did a great job on that, so this is good. Now, the hot pot's done, you got the money. That's good.
Right.
Next order of business.
Paper 179-22 Committee Report. Finance Paper 141-22 Order That $445,000 is appropriated from available water sewer retained earnings to pay costs of designing and replacing lead water service lines throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
On Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Condon for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, we met on this paper. It's $445,000. It's coming from the Water Enterprise Fund, which will be used for lead water service line replacement throughout the city. We have a lot of money available to, for these, to address these lead water lines, so I would make a motion that we adopt this paper.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Condon? On Counselor Sika's motion, excuse me, on Counselor Condon's motion to adopt, Counselor Sika's seconded it, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Nine, nothing. Congratulations, Counselor, and the residents of Warr 2, and I know you had a good team there too, so. Janelle Devitz did a great job on that, so this is good. Now, the hot pot's done, you got the money. That's good.
Right.
Next order of business.
Paper 179-22 Committee Report. Finance Paper 141-22 Order That $445,000 is appropriated from available water sewer retained earnings to pay costs of designing and replacing lead water service lines throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
On Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Condon for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, we met on this paper. It's $445,000. It's coming from the Water Enterprise Fund, which will be used for lead water service line replacement throughout the city. We have a lot of money available to, for these, to address these lead water lines, so I would make a motion that we adopt this paper.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Condon? On Counselor Sika's motion, excuse me, on Counselor Condon's motion to adopt, Counselor Sika's seconded it, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Paper passes, nine, nothing. Next order of business.
Paper 180-22 Committee Report. Finance Paper 142-22 Order That $3 million is appropriated to pay costs of designing and replacing lead water service lines throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 85, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city thereof. All or any portion of this amount may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority's Lead Services In Line Replacement Program, and the mayor and any other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to execute and deliver any agreement or any documents in connection therewith.
On Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Condon for the committee report.
Thank you. Once again, we met on this paper last week. It's $3 million to replace lead services, private and city. It's 10-year borrowing period through the MWR rate, zero interest.
Rates?
Zero interest on this $3 million. So it's a great deal for the community and the city.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. Counselor Winslow, I see your light on, so I'll go to you before I ask for a second, unless you're doing that. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're having a series of papers vote on lead lines, and I really, I want to recognize our city engineer, Yem Lip, who's here, who's been working hard on this. You don't have to come up yet if you don't want, but I think it's, we are, I mean, over the past four years, we continue to gear up to do more lead service lines. I know as part of my ARPA committee, there's actually another $2 million we're working to put in over and above what we're voting on tonight. And with further ARPA money in the federal infrastructure bill that will allow us to apply for more, and Congresswoman's, over $3 million, we're really gearing up. So you're going to see over the next, you know, three to five years, we're really going to gear up and do more lead service lines to be on target to ultimately speed up the removal. I think we still have about 2,500 to go, so very excited. Thank you, Engineer Lip, for getting this all queued up, and it'll be disruptive, it'll be very worthwhile to do this important public safety measure for our community. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to build on what Counselor Winslow was saying and recognize the huge amount of work that's gone to get us to this stage where we think that, you know, with these, my understanding, please somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but that with these appropriations and the additional funding that Counselor Winslow mentioned, you know, we're gearing up to remove the remaining lead service lines that we do have in the city of Malden, and we think we can get there. And that's, so that's been a lot of years in the making. Malden does have something like 10% of the entire state's lead service lines impacting drinking water in some of our most disadvantaged homes in our communities. And so this is just such a core environmental justice issue, and I'm really grateful for the mayor's support. Maria Luiz, the mayor's office, I know, has been shepherding this through for years, and we've been hammering away slowly at this. So I just, I just want to appreciate what a big deal this is to get, to get this in place. And I had, I had very little to do with it, I'm not even on the finance committee, but I just want to make sure that folks who are watching in here appreciate that this is really important. Malden's one of the, you know, this has been a really outstanding issue for Malden. If you don't know whether you have a lead service line in your house, you can go to the city's website, and you can check it out, see if you're listed. We know many of them, but not all of them, and you can also request a test of your home line so that you can know for sure whether you have, whether you have a lead service line if you don't already know. So just wanted to offer those additional points. Very grateful this is moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Hayes.
Thank you. I also want to say how great it is to finally see all the work over the years come to fruition,
fifteen or twenty-year timeline, we're talking about five to ten years. So, so this is speeding things up, but we still, it's still, to get up to that four hundred a year is, is still a big thing. But, you know, this is a big investment. And then I'd say the federal infrastructure bill will be able to apply for the money for both public and private lines. And that will require us to commit to get them all out in ten years. So, so we're gearing up to that.
And I don't in any way mean to diminish what a large achievement this is.
But it's a lot of work.
I get asked the question a lot, like, how much is there left to go? What else are we looking at? And also, like, what if people don't do the private side? We don't really get credit for that entire replacement on the city side if they don't do it. So just to keep that in mind, it's really, it's really tough. And like I said, I remember from being with the redevelopment authority before it was OSPCD, it's super challenging, even, you know, folks who qualify by income. It's just, you can't force people to do something on private property, and it's so frustrating. But this sounds like a tremendous investment. So I'm obviously really, really glad we're doing it. But anything that we can do to kind of get the word out about those programs, too, is really going to be helpful.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody else? Well, I'll just jump into. I think this is, obviously, my counselors have said it very eloquently, there's, there's a lot of money this year going towards it, and it's, it's much needed. It's, you know, chipping away is a good word. I know when, when this first started, and not that I'm saying it in a bad way, the EPA kind of changed the rules on us midstream. And because rightly so, it's a priority, it became a priority for the EPA to make sure we have, I know it sounds ironic, but to make sure we have clean drinking water. And so that made us start our process that's been going on. And because of, I think, a lot of good work on the, both the public and private side, and now that we have this available funding, ultimately, at the end of the day, it comes down to funding these type of endeavors. And, you know, when I talk to residents, this is what I refer to as the boring, not sexy stuff, right? Because you're literally spending millions of dollars and you're burying it, very important to our health, but it's not something you see every day and you get to appreciate. But it is certainly what everybody deserves, is good, clean, healthy water. So there's another couple of papers coming down. And I know there was some other discussion in our finance meeting last week. There's some other federal money that might be coming down from Representative Clark's office that's earmarked some money. So there's some other buckets we can leverage. So hopefully, we will be back this year with some additional resources, both from the public and private side. So I think good work all around. So Counselor Condon? Hold on, hold on. Counselor Condon? It's not voice activated, Counselor.
I believe we're committed to a hundred fifty a year, which we have surpassed that thanks to the good work of Bob Knox in conjunction with our own Maria Luiz out there, who stays on top of this. And we're between a hundred fifty and, in the vicinity of two hundred a year right now. So we're living up to our obligation, but there's a lot of miles left to go. So I move that we adopt this.
Thank you. On Counselor Condon's motion, seconded by, I heard Counselor Colin, Colleen, Colin, Colin Hayes? Sorry. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. Linahan. McDonald. Seika. Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Nine, nothing that carries. For those keeping score at home. Next order of business.
Okay, and the next committee report, one eighty-one dash twenty-two, it says paper one forty-two dash twenty-two, but we just spoke about that one. This paper number is one forty-three dash twenty-two.
So on Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Condon for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on this last week. And this is a zero-interest loan from the MWRA. We were, we had done this years one through five. This, we hope, will take us, this program, years six to ten. So it's a water main replacement program. And Yem has done a great job on it. And we moved, I move that we adopt this five million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars in zero interest from the MWRA.
Okay, any questions? Kind of going along with the same theme from the previous two? Okay, see no questions or comments? Do I have a second for Counselor Condon? On Counselor Seminelli's, saw his hand first, so on Counselor Condon's motion to adopt, seconded by Counselor Seminelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Condon, yes.
Linahan. McDonald. Seika. Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Motion is adopted, nine, nothing. Next order of business.
Paper one eighty-two dash twenty-two, committee report, Finance Committee, paper one fifty dash twenty-two, the Standing Committee on Finance, whom we referred, paper one fifty dash twenty-two, we haven't considered the same, present the following report.
On Counselor Condon's motion to, to, to adopt, right? Right? Oh, we still got to the committee report. On Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Condon for the committee report.
Is this the five-million-dollar bond issue?
This is the one fifty dash twenty-two, the Standing Committee, right?
Oh, okay. This is, we took this up in committee. It's a five-million-dollar bond issue that the mayor's requesting we go out for. It's a mill and overlaying a number of streets through all the different wards. It sounds like it's a lot of money, but they took in consideration how much debt we're retiring in the next couple fiscal years versus how much it will cost us in 2024, or actually cost us less than what it does now to go out for this five million dollars. And if you have anything, the treasurer's here. If I miss something, you have any questions, I'm sure he can fill us in. But that's basically it, to do mill and overlay throughout the city. And it's a five-million-dollar bond that we'd be going out for.
Okay, questions for Counselor Condon? Entertain a second? On Counselor Condon's motion to adopt, seconded by Counsel Seika. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. Linahan. McDonald. Seika. Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora. Motion is adopted, nine, nothing. I do want to thank Counselor Condon. He came in not knowing that Counsel Murphy was under the weather, pinched it for, and did a great job.
Now I'm a little worried.
Nice, nice, nice work, Counselor Condon. Next order of business. Counsel Seika?
Thank you, Counsel. Well, Spatafora. So I'm looking at, I think the docket's clear. Am I correct? I'm looking to take paper one forty-eight twenty-two off of the table.
Didn't even know that.
And hopefully place it on file.
Okay, on Counselor Seika's motion to take one forty-eight dash what?
One forty-eight twenty-two.
Okay, to take one forty-eight dash twenty-two off the table, I need a second? By Counselor, so that's on Counselor Seika's motion, seconded by Counselor Crowe? Clerk will, uh, call the roll. Call the roll, clerk.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. Linahan. McDonald. Seika.
Yes.
Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. It's off the table, Counselor.
Great, thank you. I'm also going to be making a motion that we place this paper on file due to the judge's recent ruling that we did not handle this matter expeditiously. And we can no longer enforce the December order to remove the fiveG small cell tower from thirty-seven, thirty-nine Willard Street.
Okay, on Counsel Seika's motion to place on file, I need a second. Counsel's, on Counsel Seika's motion to place on file, seconded by Counselor Linahan. Clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries nine, nothing for the audience. Keep in score. The docket is still clear. I will entertain personal privilege. Let's start from my, okay, we'll start from my left. So Counsel Linahan had the light on first. Counsel Linahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to quickly acknowledge that we had this great park cleanup this weekend. Thank the Girl Scouts. Thank everybody that turned out. I'm going to put Dan on the spot because he, he went up into the woods where all the gnarly stuff is and took all the gross stuff down. And, you know, we had a great turnout, even with the weather. It rained really, really hard about an hour in, which, of course, the kids loved and the parents were not super psyched about. But we still had over a dozen bags of trash. Huge thanks to the DPW for getting us set up with the bags and the trash pickers coming to pick it up in the downpour. We'll definitely be doing another one in May because the pond, you know, there's nips and you name it, it's everywhere. So we definitely need to do a round two. I want to give some credit to the Girl Scout troop, which my daughter just joined after having so much fun at the park cleanup. So look what your civic involvement can do. And then the other thing I just wanted to quickly flag is on Saturday, May fourteenth, which may seem far away, but is right around the corner. The city's going to be hosting an arts and culture street festival outside the Malden Courthouse. We're going to be showcasing the work that the Steering Committee did to envision a future arts and culture center in that building. But we're also hoping that it's just going to be a really fun day, so you can come down, get an idea of the future of the building, see some architectural renderings. But we're also hoping to have some fun performances, maybe some food. If you or anyone you know is a performer or somebody who is an artist or artisan that might want to display or sell things, we are going to be making tables and tents available, similar to how the summer festivals function. And we do have some small stipends to pay performers. So definitely reach out if you know anybody that might be interested in showcasing their performing skills. And again, that's Saturday, May fourteenth, outside the courthouse on Lower Summer Street. And that's going to be from twelve to four P.M. Come on down and then patronize one of the nearby restaurants after. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Counsel Linahan. Counselor Winslow, next.
So kind of following up on the Earth Day cleanup theme, I will be sponsoring a cleanup on April thirtieth at nine a.m. at Salem Wood School, along with the Friends of the Live Like Becca Foundation to clean up the area along the bike trail, you know, in Ward six, five, and seven right there. So, so we'll be doing that. I know there's some other ones coming up. I think Counsel O'Malley's doing one for Waits Mount on, on Earth Day. So lots going on there. I wanted to wish folks a wonderful Passover and Easter season coming up and enjoy those celebrations with your family and your religious community. And then any, wishing anybody in Malden who's running the Boston Marathon on Monday, best luck there. Sounds like it's going to be a cool, wet day, which actually runners will like. So, so good luck on everybody on, on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Next, I have Counsel Seika.
Thank you, Counselor. So I too would like to wish everybody a happy Passover and a happy Easter this weekend. Counselor Spatafora and I will be down Linden Park at ten a.m. this Saturday, April sixteenth, for our annual egg hunt at Hunting Field. All a welcome. We have six thousand eggs ready to go, filled and ready to go for this Saturday. So I hope that we see everybody back for our annual egg hunt. And then on Saturday, April twenty-third, the following Saturday, we have wood a cleanup from nine to one P.M. The street sweeper list will go out the beginning of next week. So if everybody does their part and cleans up the front of their house, the street sweeper, along with Bobby Knox and I, will be driving by to clean up all your debris. We will also be simultaneously hosting a clothing drive at the Linden Steam Academy. So if anybody has any clothes, accessories, footwear, outwear, linens, blankets, quilts, stuffed animals, handbags, canvas bags, et cetera, tablecloths, placemats, and other household textiles, there will be a semi-truck in the parking lot of the Linden Steam Academy, located at twenty-nine Westcott Street, next Saturday, April twenty-third, for the same hours, nine a.m. to one P.M. The proceeds to this clothing drive will be going to Malden Public Schools. Their, I think it's their general account. It's going to go to all of them. It's not going to the PTOs. It's actually going to benefit the Malden Public Schools. So if anybody's cleaning out and can save their stuff till next Saturday, it will be greatly appreciated. Nine to one, Linden Steam Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seika. Counselor Hayes.
There's never too many happy Easters and happy Passovers. So I'd like to wish everyone listening tonight great times with their families. But I also wanted to say that Malden Porch Fest has been meeting and doing a great job under Yin Kiefer's leadership. And the last, the deadline to apply to be either a performer, a band, or to sign up for a porch is this Friday. So that would be April fifteenth. So you would go to maldenporchfest.com. And hopefully, if you have any last-minute desires to offer up your porch or play, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hayes. And Counselor Crowe's next.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to everybody a joyous Passover and Easter, as everybody else said. And since everyone should be getting their calendars out, there's a lot going on. I will be, Ward one will be hosting the annual Mother's Day breakfast on Mother's Day, May eighth, at Anthony's, nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. So if you're a mom, an aunt, a friend, or just someone that wants to support the women in your life and in our community, please come on down and enjoy. On May fourteenth, right before you go down to the courthouse, Counselor Winslow and I are working on Malden's annual bike fair that'll be happening ten to one P.M. at the Ferryway Parking Lot. We have, you know, helmets, we have backpacks, we have water bottles, we have helmet decorating, and we have bikes to raffle off. And we have really just a great time. So come on down, ten to one. So come on down, 10 to 1. More information will be coming out, because we want people to register, just so to make sure we don't have a crush at one point, but stretch it out. And Ward 1 will be having our annual cleanup along the bike trail on Canal Street on May 21st. Again, we'll be working with the High Rock Church, who's come out for the last, I don't know, five or six years, to help clean up that stretch of the bike path. So we hope to see everybody across the community in the next couple of weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counsel McDonald.
Happy Easter, happy Passover, and also, you have till Tuesday, April 19th, to file your income taxes. Thank you, Patrick.
That's a good way to end it, Counsel. Thank you, reminding everybody that. So I don't think there's any other lights. I will just say a couple of things. I do have a couple announcements. First, I do want to, want what everybody else, happy Passover, happy Easter. It's a very holy time, there's several religions that celebrate around this time, so please take time to celebrate with your family and loved ones. Also want to let the counsel know that the mayor, I'm looking at my notes, that the mayor has requested that the DPW Commission designate Chris Rosa, who's, who's in the DPW now, as the tree warden, and it was approved. Bobby Knox has been serving in this capacity for several years now. Chris went through the coursework, and he's certified by the state, and this will allow us to continue to go after grants for trees and beautification of the city, so that's good news that way. I remember a previous council had made us a tree city probably six, five or six years ago, so good to see that continue. Patty Boucher? Boucher? Bouchieri? We're debating if it's French or Irish over here. Bouchieri, who works in the clerk's office, her last day is Thursday. I know Clerk Bouchy sent out a reminder, but if you get the opportunity, go by and say, good luck, congratulations. She's not retiring, she's moving on to another opportunity in another city. She was, personally, Patty was great to me as a counselor, always helped me out with, with some of my requests, so I will certainly miss her, but take the opportunity, at least say thank you for her support. And then happy to announce that a lot of us are working on individual ARPA funding opportunities, the grant for the nonprofit ARPA. It took us a little while to get through it. There was a lot of requirements by the federal government with nonprofits that can qualify for this, so we had to make sure that when we put this application together, we're capturing all those requirements. It's a, I don't want to say it's harder than some of the other ones, but it's a little bit more precise in terms of what you qualify and what types of organizations qualify under COVID-related items. So the nonprofit grant for ARPA application is on the city website, it was posted the other day. I'm working with myself, as the council appointee, Dora, the librarian, and then the resident who was, who was happily accepted to join us, Linda Zack. She's going to be on the committee as well, so that application is on the city website, so anybody's looking for that. And we'll be doing a press release in the coming days to let all the nonprofits know. Dora, who's the librarian at the library, she has a database that she's put together in the years, about 400 nonprofits in the city of Malden, and I didn't realize there was that many. Some of them will not be able to qualify, depending on the status of the nonprofit, because I think everybody realizes there are different levels of nonprofits, but we'll be sending that email communication out to those 400 as a starter, and then do a little communication through print media and then social media. So I'm glad to finally have that up there and ready to go. So with that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn by Counsel Seika, seconded by Counsel Condon. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meaning is adjourned.[1589.88]